Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. My name is Brian Moriarty, and I am the chairman of the Hatfield Select Board. And along with my colleagues, Ed Jaworski and Diana Zino, we would like to thank all of you for joining us here at Hatfield Memorial Town Hall. As we receive exciting news regarding our MassWorks grant application for our planned Route 5 water and sewer improvements. I'd especially like to welcome our invited guests. Mike Caneely, Secretary of Housing and Economic Development; Senator Joe Commerford; Representative Lindsey Sabodosa; Erica Gies; and Frank Steeble, both from Steeble Eltron, one of our business partners here in town. And I'd like to recognize Juan Vega, who's in the audience, undersecretary for CPRO. The submission of our grant application to the State Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development was truly a team effort. Locally, that team consisted of: the Board of Selectmen; DPW Director Phil Genovese; Building Inspector Kyle Scott; Town Administrator Marlene Michalski; Consulting Engineer Michael Oll; and Erica Gies and Frank Steeble from Steeble Eltron; and, of course, our local delegation to the State House, Senator Commerford, Rep. Sabodosa, and Western Mass Economic Development President Rick Sullivan, who was unable to be here today. Other local business partners were also in strong support of this grant application, as it will allow many to grow and expand their existing businesses, as well as explore new business ventures along the Route 5 corridor. So, what does the awarding of this grant mean for Hatfield? Hatfield, as we all know, is a small rural town that strives to preserve our rural and agricultural character while promoting sustainable economic development. The Route 5 corridor, West Street, from North Hampton to Waitley, is a key location that the town has identified for promoting further development due to its proximity to existing transportation infrastructure, such as Amtrak, Vermont Railroad Line, Interstate I-91, and FRTA bus service from North Hampton to Greenfield. With this MassWorks grant, Hatfield can now move forward with our plan to increase water and sewer capacity on Route 5 between Lindsay Road and Rocks Road. This Route 5 project is part of the town's overall commitment to improve and replace aging infrastructure throughout town to provide clean and safe drinking water and expand sewer services for our residents and businesses. To date, the town has invested significantly in its water infrastructure in excess of $2.5 million. But today's award will help to support the proposed economic development by area businesses and new housing growth for residents. This is just a very brief explanation of the importance of Hatfield receiving this timely MassWorks grant. So, thank you. Right now, I would ask Secretary Mike Caneely to say a few words regarding this MassWorks grant. Mr. Secretary?
All right. Thank you. You're welcome. (APPLAUSE).
Well, it's great to be with you today. Let me get the official business out of the way and officially announce a $2 million MassWorks infrastructure grant to extend sewer service on Route 5 from Lindsay Road to Rocks Road and water service for 1,200 feet along Route 5 south of Rocks Road. So, that's the announcement. Congratulations to the town.[217.34][217.34](APPLAUSE). I thought I might say a few words about the MassWorks program. So, in the last five years, the five years of the Baker-Palito administration, we have made $450 million of MassWorks grants to 220 projects in 140 communities. We've helped create 14,000 housing units, millions of square feet of commercial space, thousands of jobs. It's a wonderful program. It's a large program. It's a flexible program. And therefore, it's probably the most powerful tool in the economic development toolbox. Now, the other point about MassWorks is it's competitive. And so, this year, we're making 36 MassWorks grants. We had applications for 92. We're granting about $72 million. We had demand for $220 million or something. So, these are hard projects to get. And we got a great team led by Undersecretary Juan Vega, who helps lead the MassWorks effort. And they get all the applications, come in, and we screen them. We have a big team that looks at them. But the end of the day, there's really two criteria we look at. One is impact. We want to fund projects that will have a big impact on their communities. And the second is planning. You know, we like to fund things that are the product of some community planning, where the town or city can tell us, "Look, this project's important to us for the following reasons. We have a strategy and an aspiration of where we want to go, and this project will help us." And I will say, one of the more fun parts of the days like this are coming out and hearing the stories behind the projects, and all the work that took place locally to say, you know, "Here's where we're going. Here are our goals. Please help us. Please help us fund this project." And so, that really is, and it really speaks well to the town and your vision and your planning to get this grant, to do this work. I think it's a great project. I mean, the fact that we're making this basic investment in public infrastructure. And by the way, people always ask me, "What does MassWorks fund?" And it funds things like water and sewer, and roadways, and streets, and lighting. What it really funds is that community vision, and helps these communities move forward. And it's a great project to put in this basic infrastructure, to help a great local company grow and other small businesses grow. And it's, I think it's a wonderful way to move the community forward. I do want to say that it's great to have the senator and the rep here with us today, because everything we do in the administration is in partnership with our colleagues in the legislature. And so, these MassWorks funds that we get to go out and make investments with are the product of the Economic Development Bill signed by the governor in 2016 and 2018, in great collaboration with our colleagues in the legislature to make these funds available. So, it's a wonderful collaboration and partnership with Senator Commerford and Rep. Sabodosa and our other colleagues in the legislature. I'd close by noting that the governor, last Friday, signed the Economic Development Bill for the second term of the Baker-Palito administration. We spent a lot of time this year traveling all over the state, getting impact on what our plan should be. And the plan has four main pillars, four things we're going to focus on, and five key principles that will inform the work. And one of the pillars is helping to ensure we have even more vibrant communities, and making sure we keep making investments like this through MassWorks and other programs to make sure our communities can grow and support their aspirations. And on the principles, there's a number of things that are interesting, but I find three of them kind of connect today here in this work. One is infrastructure. We need to keep creating more robust public infrastructure. The other is equitable opportunity. And the third I touch on is regional planning. So, we need to think regionally. We need to keep developing better public infrastructure. And we need to make sure that everybody, all across the state, every citizen, every community, every region, every company, has what they need from us to make sure they can grow. So, it's great to be with you all today. Congratulations to the town. Thank you.[438.71][438.71](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary. If I could now, I'd like to introduce Senator Joe Commerford to say a few words.[452.81][452.81](APPLAUSE).
Hello, everyone. It's such an honor and a pleasure to be here. I want to start by congratulating the town of Hatfield. This is a really enormous win, and it's based, as the secretary, I think, said so beautifully, on your grit, your planning, your vision, your tenacity to see through these huge projects. And so, just, I'm so tremendously excited and very, very, very grateful that you've led Hatfield so beautifully for all of us. And then, I just want to really just recognize Secretary Caneely, and of course, Mr. Undersecretary. These folks are everywhere in Western Massachusetts. You know, they were recently out in Deerfield for two tours. They're here today for four stops in the region, three in the Hampshire-Franklin-Worcester District alone. And I want to pull out something that Secretary Caneely said so beautifully, and it's about equity, an equitable representation, equitable access to resources. You know, Mr. Secretary, you embody that in your actions. You embody that in the awards that are going out today, in our part of the beautiful Commonwealth. And you embody that. You and your team embody that in your accessibility to us here in Western Massachusetts. We talk a lot about regional equity, and today is one giant leap toward greater regional equity for Western Massachusetts. So, I'm happy to be here and celebrate with you. Thank you so much.[543.29][543.29](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Senator. If I could, I'd like to ask Representative Sabodosa to say a few words.[554.88][554.88](APPLAUSE).
I am so delighted to be here this morning. And one of the things that the secretary talked about was how these awards are given for towns that have vision, and that are able to explain why they're important for their community. And I have not stepped foot in the town of Hatfield where someone has not talked to me about this sewer extension over the last year. So, you have incredible vision, and dedication, and passion. And you've seen this not only as helping one business, but helping many, and helping your town grow, and generating revenue, and generating community. And that is why I am so thrilled. I was so thrilled when I got this news that you were getting this grant, and there was nowhere else that I could possibly be this morning than here to celebrate that with you. And I want to just emphasize that I so appreciate it when you thank the delegation, but this was the town of Hatfield. This was the people in this community that, day in, day out, thought about how to make this grant better and how to make it a reality. So, it's your select board, it's your town administrator, it's really everyone here, the volunteers in this town that make Hatfield a special place and that should be celebrating this win today. So, thank you for having me here to celebrate with you.[632.82][632.82](APPLAUSE).
When we were Christmas tree shopping back a few weeks ago, I guess I shouldn't have brought up the whole sewer thing to you.[651.11][651.11](LAUGHTER).
It was mine.
All right. My apologies. We ran into each other at an event, so, my, I'm sorry. Thank you for your kind words. You know, honestly, I think I speak for the select board and the townspeople when we talk about our delegation to Boston. So, while you gave us praise today, we'd like to thank both of you and everybody else who's part of this process for the town of Hatfield. So, thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask one of our business partners, Frank Steeble, to say a few words.[688.38][688.38](APPLAUSE).
Yes, thank you very much. Yes. I don't know how much you know about Steeble Eltron, so I was going to tell you a little bit about our company. So, we are privately held company. My brother and I jointly own the company. And the headquarters is in Germany. We have about 3,000 employees worldwide. And we have plants, two plants in Germany, one plant in Thailand, one plant in Slovakia, and one plant in China. So, we're really operating on a worldwide basis. And this, our operation here is taking care of the North American market and South American market as well. So, this is a very important location for us. And so, I myself came, I grew up in Germany, of course. You can tell by my accent. So, came here in the '80s to study and ended up staying here in this wonderful area. And so, we are mostly known for tankless electric water heaters, which is what we've been selling mostly in the United States so far. But in Europe, we're also really big into heat pumps for water heating applications and space heating applications. And we're going to start to bring more products, those types of products, into the U.S. And we need more warehouse space for that. So, this is perfect that we can now go ahead at some point and build an additional warehouse in that location on Route 5. So, we're planning to continue to grow in this area, and we're fully committed to Hatfield. And if you ever need a really good water heater, please give us a call.[791.82][791.82](LAUGHTER).[793.23][793.23](APPLAUSE).
And Frank wasn't kidding about being worldwide. When we were out front before this event started, I mentioned to him that when we were in St. Martin last year, and I went to do a little wash and laundry, as my wife had asked me to do so, when I opened the cabinet, there was a Steeble Eltron water system, or heat pump, probably. Yep. So, you are everywhere. I was in St. Martin, so.[825.13][825.13](LAUGHTER). All right. And our last speaker today also is with Steeble Eltron. I'd like to introduce Erica Gies, who is the real estate development side of the House, Frank. Okay. Please welcome Erica.[841.13][841.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you all. I'll be brief. Oh, this is new and on. I'll be brief. I've been, Frank and I have been working together since the late '90s. And when Frank was looking to expand, he was originally in Holyoke. He started Steeble Eltron. And when he was looking to expand, Hatfield came up and has instantly been a perfect fit. The town has been so welcoming and so supportive of everything that we've been trying to do together. And it started at 15 West Street, 17 West Street. We expanded down there. Frank purchased the 73 acres that are in now this impact zone by the sewer system, in the sewer extension. And that's a huge parcel, which is zoned industrial and residential. So, for us, having this now acknowledgement from the state and this grant really supports our vision for sustainable development and growth, because that's an aquifer recharge area. The town well is right there. It's an old gravel pit. It's also part of the glacial till zone in the rise there. And then, also, the flat area is clay and wet. It would make no sense to do septic systems in a light industrial zone there. So, for us, having this vote of confidence really allows us to expand our vision of sustainable development, restoring the original hydrology of the site, the aquifer, recharging that aquifer, and also meeting the economic needs for development and growth with our industrial project, our warehouse, and then housing, too. Our long-term plan is housing on the top. So, we're in a great corridor, a great location. So, this is a vote of confidence from the state, and we have this partnership that we've had with the town. We're so excited to continue this. It's been really a pleasure working with everyone in the town, and we really appreciate it. So, thank you to everyone.[963.13][963.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Erica. And I'd like to thank all of our guest speakers today, and thank everybody for being here. This actually concludes the formal part of the award ceremony. I'd like to thank Secretary Caneely one more time, and the MassWorks team for all they've done for Hatfield. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Safe travels back to wherever you came from.[991.00][991.00](LAUGHTER). Thank you very much.[993.13][993.13](APPLAUSE).
This is a continuation of the select board meeting from December 17, 2019. We have just met with Secretary Caneely and received a MassWorks grant, which will be spoken about just a little bit. So, at this point, we're getting to some of our agenda items. So, under announcements, does anybody have anything?
No, I just want to say, Brian, you did a great job seeing the event. I think you gave a really nice presentation for everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, Ed. Thank you. I appreciate that. And thank you guys for your efforts on this as well.
I would just remind people that they can still buy candles or sponsor candles for the birthday cake. They're $25 apiece. You can get them here at the town hall. There's different people from the 350th Committee, myself, who's selling them. And we try to be at some events. We may be at a boys' basketball game, a girls' basketball game coming up, so.
Do you anticipate having those or having any left at the gala? Or do you think, I mean, have you guys gotten to that point? Depends?
Well, I'm sure there'll be some left where people could sponsor them.
Okay. I just didn't know.
They may be, yeah.
Okay. But don't count on it. People are better off to try, because you're limiting the number, right? Actually.
It's only, well, we'll only sell 350, right?
Yeah. Okay.
And they're selling pretty well.
Okay. They make great stocking stuffers, I heard. Is that true?
Well, it's nice. Your name will appear on a sign as being, you know, part of this and helping to sponsor the cake and the 350th, then it'll be put out there.
Are we selling them at the Luminarium at night?
I'm not sure about, I'm not sure about that.
Might be an opportunity there as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, there could be logistic issue, though. I mean, you certainly would have people there. You know, it's a matter of, would you have a booth or a table or some sort of way of...
We can talk about that, but wherever there's people gathered, we'd like to think about selling them. But we don't have specific plans to be at Luminarium, but it's possible. Are you volunteering, my friend?
I'll have my tickets with me, so, I mean, if people want to.
Okay.
I mean, we're going to light a cake that night.
It is going to be lit that night.
So, it'd be a great time to say, "Hey, anyone wants to sponsor one of these candles?"
Thank you.
Speaking of Luminarium.
Oh, and that's right. And speaking of Luminarium, we should announce that it is this Saturday night.
This Saturday?
Saturday night.
Yep.
And the ceremony starts at 6:30?
Six.
I think six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
I think the official, yes, I believe officially it's at 6:00. People usually start congregating, you know.
And it will include the initial lighting of the birthday cake, which would be really exciting.
The library has a children's story hour at 5:00 P.M. and...
And then, the church has the handbells at 7:00. So, I think we're squeezed between that.
Great. And the weather looks chilly, but dry, so, at this point. So, that's good. Okay. Does anybody have any other announcements to make? Marlene, did you?
I do. Thank you. We received notification this morning from the Department of Revenue. Tax rate has been approved at $13.53. Just received the notification.
So, that's great. So, the tax rate's been set. That's the good news. The bad news is you'll be seeing your tax bills relatively...
In about a week and a half.
Relatively soon. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. But kidding aside, this is an important step for the town and the revenue stream for the town. So, thank you to Marlene and our financial team, Sharon and Jenny and others, for sticking with this and getting this done. And for what it's worth, it's 13...
$13.53.
$13.53, which is a little bit lower than last year's tax rate.
Last year was $13.89.
So, .36. So, thank you. All right. Are there any other announcements?
No.
Okay. I have one I'd like to make that I've been stating before our public meetings, which is: "The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular, pardon me, all regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. The executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the select board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board." So, thank you. All right. Is there anybody, yeah, those are for you, Diana. Is there anybody here for public forum? Mr. Kier?
Just, I've been thinking recently, there was an article on the town meeting warrant last spring that never materialized after a government, town government committee appointed by the select board had looked into the possibility of rearranging the select board to five people. There was differing opinions from differing lawyers as to whether the procedure was correct or incorrect, and it's kind of, just sort of, sitting out there now. And I'm hoping that that doesn't just get forgotten about, that at some point that gets brought up, maybe even considered as another town meeting warrant article this coming spring, or... But just want to keep you guys reminding that that work got done, and that there should be some sort of a consideration by the full, by the town as to whether or not that is something that we should be considering or not. So, just a reminder, having been part of that process and put a lot of time, effort, and energy into it, I don't want it to just kind of go by the wayside, so.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. Is there anybody else here for public comment? The approval, do we have the minutes? Yes. So, approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the following minutes. Board of Selectmen Executive Session 723, 2019; Board of Selectmen Meeting 723, 2019; Board of Selectmen Meeting 822, 2019; and Board of Selectmen Meeting November 25, 2019.
Okay. You've heard a motion, and it's been seconded. Does anybody have any questions or changes or comments regarding any of those four separate sets of minutes? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Posted business regarding the finance director position. So, before Marlene...
Did we skip one?
Oh, we skipped one? I'm sorry. The annual license renewals. Sorry.
Just need a vote of the board to approve the licensed renewals presented.
Which is a yearly, a yearly process for us.
Do we do them individually, or just as?
As presented.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve annual liquor licenses, Class 1, 2, and 3 auto dealer licenses, entertainment licenses, and automatic amusement licenses as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the licenses as presented. Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. All right. Getting back in order. So, next agenda item is to talk about the finance director position that the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee had spoken about and advertised for. There was a candidate, we did speak about it at our last meeting, there was a candidate who had applied and had been interviewed, but declined the position. So, and that would have been an individual who would have been the finance director/town accountant on a full-time basis. So, obviously, the accounting services and help us look to the future as different ways from a finance perspective, and work with our budgeting process and things like that. So, I don't want to say we're back to the drawing board, but we had to re-advertise. And so far, we've had two, and Marlene, I don't want to steal your thunder, so far we've had two businesses, or two entities, not individuals, but businesses, express an interest in becoming the Hatfield Accounting/Finance Company to assist us moving forward, right? So, I don't know, is this something you wanted to expand upon?
I just, you know, you represented the Board of Selectmen, Sharon representing the Treasury Collector's Office, myself, and members of the Finance Committee have met with representatives from Melonson Heath and Pioneer Valley Planning. Their municipal regional services program provides accounting services. So, we have met with those individuals, and we're going to ask them to come back.
Right.
So, I'm in the process of scheduling those. So, we may, we don't anticipate having a finance director/accountant as of January 1st. However, we will continue the AP process with an accounting person from Pioneer Valley, Pioneer Valley, Bay State Municipal Accounting Group. She's going out on her own. We need to have somebody in place to do that anyway. So, that will work out. We will continue to, Treasury's Office will continue to do what they need to do, and as soon as we have somebody in place, you know, we'll begin reconciliation for '20. We may be, we're looking at closing out '19. But I think the point is, though, that we are going to ask those individuals back.
Back, yes. So, thank you. Just to jump on that a little bit. So, as people may or may not recall, the current accounting service, Bay State Municipal Accounting, is going out of business as of the end of this year, in two weeks, December 31st. We've been trying for quite some time to fill that void that we know is coming as of January 1st. To Marlene's point, we have somebody in place ready to do the daily type of accounting services that are necessary. And we are asking both the companies who we interviewed with, which was more of, I would say, we interviewed kind of at the higher level. So, Melonson Heath and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, both have strong backgrounds in accounting services. So, we could hit the ground running with either of them. But we, the interview process that we've gone through thus far has been at the managerial level of those companies, and not necessarily with the hands-on people that we would necessarily be dealing with. And that's who we want to interview next. I will say this, I personally, and I can't speak for other folks who were part of the interview process, I don't believe we could go wrong with either one.
I agree.
And for what it's worth, both of them said about the other, "You can't go wrong with them." So, I mean, it was just kind of a good, it was a good process. I wish it was moving along, you know. This time of year, you've got vacations with people, traveling. But Marlene's already reached out to both to say, "We need to get you guys back in here at the local level and, you know, have some more interviews," or another interview with each of them, before we make a decision to bring it, before the Board of Selectmen and the entire Finance Committee. But, so, things are moving along. You know, we got the tax rate today. We've got somebody lined up to do the day-to-day accounting and hope to have in the next, just and hope to have in the next, just the next couple of weeks, hopefully, a few weeks maybe, somebody on board from an actual accounting firm, accounting service, to be the high-level accounting services that we ultimately are going to need as we move into 2020, that calendar year, 2020. Do you guys have any questions or of either of us? Mike?
I have a question.
Okay. Yeah?
Actually, two questions. One is, Marlene is saying that Bay State or a principal of Bay State who is going under all the payables for a while, that's fine. How about, on the other side, the cash side? The cash receipts, the receivables, and just the other general accounting transactions that have to be taking place and being made by an accountant?
Right. The Treasurer's Office will be doing their own reconciliation once we have an accountant on staff.
Right.
We will be playing catch-up.
Okay, so all those transactions?
I can assure you, the Treasurer's Office is up to speed.
Yeah, I'm not...
They are.
I'm just saying, but the entries that she makes have to be reconciled.
That's right.
Yep.
They do. We know, yeah. So... We know that, yeah.
No selection whatsoever on Sharon. I know she's doing a great job. But, you know, what she does has to be put into our system.
And both companies that we've interviewed, they understand that, they know that.
Yes.
And do you have any idea of the state of our financial recording system as of December 30th? What it will be? Are you getting any input from Bay State, Justin, at this point, in terms of how he is going to leave us? What is the state of our... Where's he at with fiscal '19? Where's he at with fiscal '20?
Yep.
And I've asked him to provide that update in the next week.
Because we've got all of that to change.
We understand.
Yep.
Yep.
I've asked for three things. Where he expects to leave fiscal year '19, status of fiscal year '20, and his transition plan.
Transition, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. DPW Director Report, Water Sewer Infrastructure Project on Route 5.
Well, today, we, as you well know, that we received the $2 million grant from the Mass Works project for the Route 5 corridor for the sewer and water improvements. We've been knocking on that door for many years and we finally were awarded the $2 million. So, we are moving forward as we speak. Comprehensive environmental laws are already been out there surveying. So, the final design is the next step in the plan and get it out to bid. So, I know that you probably have something to say about the award, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Genovese. I think I've said enough today, if anybody happens to see the other part of this. Kidding aside, this truly was a team effort. And I already spoke to this when Secretary Ceneley was here, giving us, you know, approving the grant or making it official. We've actually known about this, by the way, for a couple of months. But there was somewhat of a gag order that they didn't want us to mention it to anybody as excited as we were because, you know, they wanted to come and make the presentation. And we appreciate that, having the secretary come from Boston and our local legislators. Lyndsey Sabados and Joe Comiford were here.
So, we can now go ahead and do the design and get it out to bid? Now's a good time to bid in the wintertime, right? So...
Once the design, yeah.
Right. Phil, is the idea to look at construction for... the next construction season?
It all depends on where we go. We got... the main focus right now is the final design.
Design, right, right.
And part of that design has to be, we're going to be sending out a letter, comprehensive as drafting a letter to send out to all the residents and businesses because we really want to get into the structures of the residents or the businesses to see the elevations that we can do because we don't want to do a grinder-pump system. What we want to do is a gravity-fed system for that corridor. So, once he drafts a letter and we're going to mail it out to all the residents, we're going to set up two times during the day and at night to go on individual houses, individual businesses, and see where the elevations, what we can achieve by doing the gravity. And that is going to drive how deep we have to go with the pipe, which will drive the final cost.
The final cost.
So, we'll see.
So...
But with that being said, I mean, I think that's the original plan that we looked at, a gravity-fed system. So, I don't think much is going to change there.
Right. That's what was in our application. When I was reviewing it last night, so I had an idea what I was talking about earlier today. And the... not the program, the proposal as a whole, you know, is $3.5 million, $3.6 million, quite frankly. So, just so residents understand that. So, but we have over half the money now. And this is a huge benefit to that corridor, not only for business but for residents. If you remember last spring or last fall, maybe now at this point, this room was packed with the people that live along Route 5 that are looking forward to the opportunity to be able to get onto the wastewater system, should they either need to or should they want to. So, while this certainly is going to help with business growth, which of course helps with our tax base, it's also going to help the residents who want to take part in that program as well. But I think to Phil's point, we're going to need some more final numbers or closer to final numbers because we will be coming to the townspeople, you know, to finish that funding off. And it's a little early in the process to know how we're going to do it, what we're going to ask for, and how we'll pay for it. But, you know, but I didn't want anyone thinking that, quite honestly, that the $2 million was taking care of everything. That's 55% or whatever the math is.
I mean, we anticipate that, you know, there will be an article at town meeting this annual town meeting.
Yeah, yeah. But we've got to pull the pieces together because we just assume go to town meeting once with a figure.
Right. That's right.
We have a tendency to unfortunately go back to town meeting a couple of different times because things change, and I get that. But that's why we need to do our due diligence before May as best we can. So, we have an exact figure, how we're going to pay for it, you know, what's the funding source and the payback and all those types of things. And we will get that information, obviously. That's our role and responsibility, but, you know.
You know, and as a DPW Director with a capital plan moving forward and, you know, the process had to be in by December 1st. So, we did plug that number of 3.6 into, you know, what the $2 million grant awarded, so.
And...
And is this looking at like a debt exclusion for that 1.6, which would have to go into the ballot in May as well?
It's possible, David. We haven't had the conversation yet.
No, I understand.
But, yeah, it could be a couple, yeah.
And if that is the case, then we need to get a question to the town clerk sometime, I think, April.
Because you'd have a two-headed thing. You'd have to have that exclusion approved at the ballot box as well as at town meeting, correct?
Correct.
Right.
If it goes at Route, yes, we need both, yes. Yep. Okay.
So, just getting back to...
Yes, sorry.
Some conversations on Route 5, which I've already had. It's not only the... Award of the grant or what's going to happen down there, but the construction of that project. I mean, there's businesses, you know, that are thinking of opening a deli, of doing this during that construction time, the restaurants. Because, as you know, you know, it's going to probably be a year's project down there under the Mass jurisdiction, highway jurisdiction of it. So, people are pretty excited that, you know, we're going to get revenue out of this project as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, it's just a win-win situation.
There's the obvious benefit of, you know, extending the water and sewer line and what that means for businesses. We know for a fact that there's a very good business there that will expand, expand the tax base. It'll also bring some extra jobs into town. But then there's, you know, smaller benefits that are still just as important. There'll be better fire protection in that end of town, getting people off of their septic systems there. That's an aquifer recharge area. So, disabling those septic systems along that whole corridor is a huge win. So, there's a lot of really good benefits to this project. So, hopefully, it'll be something townspeople, you know, really see the benefits.
The value of.
They should just wrap their arms around it. I mean, it's only going to get better.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Did you have anything else to say? Ed, did you have any questions?
No, no, I'm just saying, down the road, we're going to have to have another conversation on how to fund it.
Yeah.
Because there are a couple of options that we could look at that need discussion.
Yep.
That's all.
And we're getting to that time of year, right? It's December now, so right after the first of years is usually when Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, all the department heads start putting things out there to see what makes sense and the different funding sources. All right.
Quick question for Phil, if I could?
That's three.
Yes. One question. When we do the design of this, will we take at all into consideration the impact on the sewage treatment plant?
Yes, that has to be figured into the equation. We're only at 32% capacity, so... What they're going to generate off of a mile of pipe isn't going to be all that much, but...
That is a conversation, Mike, that we've had along this whole process with the Mass Works people as well, actually, the grant folks. Okay, thanks, Phil. Marlene, the Town Administrator Report.
Let's see, what do I have? Fire Chief Screening Committee, unfortunately, received a resignation. Jeff Boyle is unable to serve on the committee. You have in front of you his letter of resignation. And I would ask the board to accept his resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept his resignation from the Fire Chief Screening Committee.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the resignation of Marcus Jeff Boyle from the screening... from the Fire, excuse me, Fire Chief Screening Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
It is with regret.
It is, yes, yeah. Okay, thank you, Jeff.
And I had thought we might have an appointment to bring forward to the board to fill that vacancy. The person has changed their mind. And I'm, so I'm still seeking interest in...
So, we have four members now. We'd be looking to fill Jeff Slott, which would be the fifth person on the...
Right. I was going to suggest maybe a representative from the Finance Committee. Previous searches, we've had a representative from the Finance Committee, although Jeff was a citizen-at-large. So, we have another citizen-at-large on that committee.
Right.
Well, I mean, we can certainly put out today that we're looking for someone if they want to be part of this Fire Chief Search Committee. But I think in the meantime, it might be a good idea to run it by the Finance Committee, see if there's someone from that group that wants to fill it. I think we need to get moving.
Moving, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I would agree. Okay. Lydia? Excuse me, Marlene.
I think we've had this discussion. You probably already got this in mind. You have to change your charter first before you put someone from the Finance Committee on there?
Oh, right, right, that's right. Yes, we'd have to update the charter, revise the charter. The charter, this charter for this group says appoint a five-member committee. Doesn't, and because of the bylaw that doesn't allow a Finance Committee member to serve on any other committee with the exception of a vote. Right. Right. So, if somebody from the Finance Committee does...
Well, maybe there'll be somebody from the community at least.
Yeah, right.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Lydia. All right. HR Policy Review.
And just one other regarding the Fire...
Okay, Mike, I see your hand and I think I read something in the beginning. I'm not trying to be rude. We've got... move on, we've got to move on. Marlene?
The Fire Chief Employment Posting?
Yes.
So, there's just been some requests for clarification.
Yep.
And I know I had passed along to the members of the Board of Selectmen that I had consulted or discussed with retired Fire Chief at the Massachusetts Fire Chiefs Association. In your packet, you have an updated or revised posting. I'd like to re-advertise if the board agrees with those changes.
Do you have... and does anybody have any comments? Or have you seen this before?
If this is what we should do, then let's re-advertise and with the new changes.
Diana, you did ask me a question about the paramedic certification requirement.
Right.
And currently, the way this reads, that that is at a minimum a requirement.
Right.
Okay. I'm fine with the revisions to this.
Okay.
Okay. For people, you know, so basically, we didn't redo the whole process. It was kind of to make it more... what's a good word? So, we made some changes where it would allow potential chiefs to be looking to achieve certain certifications and certain licensures. Whereas I think in the beginning, it might have been a little too stringent, especially for the salary range we offer.
Correct.
So, I think this was sort of a step back. Marlene spoke to the retired chief, you know, another set of eyes on this, somebody with experience and a background in it. And we, you know, made some changes to minimum requirements, how many years of service you need to have in an administrative role, the distance you live from town, you know. We extended that a little bit. And then, you know, getting permanent residency in town, we extended the amount of time for somebody to fulfill that. You know, I think we were shooting high and condensing a lot of what we, I guess, ultimately would like. But we also have to be realists and realize that, you know, we're dealing with people potentially coming from somewhere else. They need time to move. They've got to find housing. They might be in the midst of working towards certain things. So, that's really all the only changes that we made. So, do you need a motion, I'm guessing, to change this?
To accept these changes.
To accept these with changes?
I'll make a motion to accept the changes to the job posting for the Fire Chief position as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Now, you can repost that and...
I will.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And HR Policy Review, Marlene? Update?
So...
Oh, this one?
We're recir... or we're circling back at, yeah, the drug-free workplace. And Town Council has reviewed the policy and made some just minor edits. The Town Council has reviewed the policy and made some just minor edits, and then also he had, let's see if we go to the bottom of page one.
Yep.
And he inserted some additional language, second sentence, including convictions relating to alcohol or marijuana, such as driving a town vehicle or driving during the workday while intoxicated, and who admits to facts. So the red, language in red, those also include some of the changes that I had already made.
So that would cover driving a town vehicle or driving their own vehicle while on work time, while intoxicated? Is that how I read that?
Including...
Or driving during the workday.
It's like it's both.
So it'd be both.
Whether you're in the clock.
Right, or your own vehicle.
If you're on the clock.
Right. That's what I would just want to...
I mean, that's how I interpret it.
On town time.
Right.
Yep.
Driving during the workday.
Yep.
So on, at the top of the second page, you can see Town Council has pretty much struck most of that section, and so where it continues to successfully complete a drug abuse or similar program, that becomes part of five.
Yeah, it, yeah, he struck it there, but it's been inserted elsewhere, basically.
Yes.
Yep.
If that policy is acceptable to the board, I would ask the board to approve those changes.
Do anybody have any comments or questions, or want to make a motion, and we'll second it and then have discussion, or how?
I'll second it.
Or bring it back for another look?
Um...
Make sure we're all comfortable with it.
Yeah, I just, I just think it's worded a little funny, the driving during the workday. I guess it should be while, I mean, because you could, it doesn't really, it doesn't say like on the, while you're actually working. I mean, during the workday, I guess, I mean, is, do you see where I'm going?
I do.
What if you have the day off, it's during a workday?
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
So here's, so as I, as I look at this again, Diana, such as driving a town vehicle while intoxicated, that's whether you're on the clock or off the clock. That's being in a town vehicle. Then there's the, or driving during the workday while intoxicated. To me, that means not in a work vehicle.
But while you're working.
Well, I think that's, I think workday implies that.
Okay.
I mean, that's how I...
Yeah, I just, it's a little...
Because it doesn't say during the day, it says workday.
Workday, yeah, okay. Then I'm fine with it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Marlene, I'm not trying to...
Driving a town vehicle.
So the town vehicle's 24/7.
So you could be in a town vehicle, or you may be in your own vehicle during regular working.
As long as that's what your interpretation is.
But if you're in a town vehicle on a Saturday night, you're not on the clock.
But you're not necessarily on the clock.
But you're susceptible to this policy.
But why would you be in a town vehicle then?
I don't, you shouldn't.
You shouldn't be, yeah.
I understand that, but if we're trying to clear, if we're trying to clarify this, it's to conviction relating such as driving a town vehicle, period. Or driving during the workday while intoxicated. You know what I'm saying? You know, I hate to use our, hate to use our DPW director as an example, but he's sitting there. So if Phil on a Sunday afternoon, you know, gets pulled over for drunken driving, and he shouldn't be, but if he's in the Hatfield vehicle, he's not on work, he's not at work, but he's in a town vehicle, right? So that's, that's what this covers.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay.
Town vehicle, doesn't mean you're on the clock, it just means you're in a town vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That's how I'm interpreting this.
That's the way, yes.
I don't know if that's how you guys are seeing it.
Just driving a town vehicle.
All right.
Yeah, or driving during the...
Correct.
Or driving during the workday.
It's like either or. You're in a town vehicle, or you're driving during the workday in a non-town vehicle.
Right.
Okay, all right. We all good with that? All right. So is there a, was there anything else on this policy?
No, I was, I'm good. I'll make a motion that we accept that policy as revised.
Motion's been made?
Section of the policy.
Section 23, as revised, there's been a motion made, and a second by Ed. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Unanticipated new business, Marlene? We need to...
Town Hall renovation.
Did I miss something again? Jeez, I keep skipping over, sorry.
Town Hall renovations update.
Is there a Town Hall renovation update? Nice job, by the way, if I could. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Thank you for everybody today, Police Department, the DPW, everybody in Town Hall for making access to the building on behalf of Secretary Canelli and his team in Channel 22, and everybody else who was here, and all our state representatives. So thank you, guys, seriously, appreciate it. Okay, sorry, I meant to, I meant to start with that. Marlene, yes? Town Hall renovation, and that was part of why I said that, was because everything looks good considering we're in the midst of construction here.
Well, and considering, yeah, we're under construction, and, you know, our, the G C was asked if they could cease operations during, you know, the morning hours while we had this event. So we continue to have our weekly construction meetings, and they have been very busy. They're in the process of finishing up with the elevator shaft, is that corrected? And I noticed they did pour the cement for the ramp.
Yes.
Yeah, I wasn't sure that they were going to be able to do that.
And the big gate's gone out front, we're covering the holes filled in. So do we need to do something for, speaking of luminarium and Town Hall construction, do we need to cordon that off somehow so people don't start walking and...
At our 350th meeting this week, I'm sorry, Steve, Chief Gunn, attended our meeting, and we talked about, he's got a plan.
Okay, all right.
We talked about it at the department head meeting last night.
Fine, all right, I just wanted to, you know...
He's, he's got a plan to make sure that it's safe and everything for everybody attending.
We don't want Santa getting hurt before Christmas.
We appreciate him being attentive to that.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Marlene.
No, that's okay, that's all right.
So they're doing the shaft, and they did the ramp?
They're finishing up with the shaft, and, oh, yes.
Yes, Lydia.
In connection with the ramp, and I'll get Phil on this, early on, I was hopeful that that ramp would be finished by the end of February, or the last week in February.
Election?
Because the presidential primary is March 3rd, there is a week, or actually, in our town, there will be three days of early voting the week prior to the primary, so I need to have handicap access. And although we've got a temporary ramp out back, the door, we have an issue with the door, so I'm watching this ramp very carefully, hoping it might be finished by then, but if not, there's a possibility that voting will be in the safety complex room across the parking lot for early voting and the presidential primary, so stay tuned, and depending on, you know, if I can get some good evidence that that ramp will be finished, we'll vote here where we usually do, but there is a possibility that voting may be across the parking lot for the primary. I'm expecting that's the only election that's going to be affected, if at all, so...
At this point, we are pretty certain that the new ramp will not be complete.
It's not going to be ready, so, yeah, so, yeah. All right, so I just wanted to kind of get that out there already, because I'm going to have to do a lot of advertising the...
Yeah. The good news, if there is any, if it's out back, people are already here, you know, it's not like a whole nother section, part of town or something, so...
Exactly.
But we'll keep getting the word...
The state wants to know.
Yes, understood.
They put things out on their website, you know, for people just to Google, where do you vote and how to do it.
You know, when's your first early voting start, do you know, off the top of your head? End of February, you said?
Yeah, it's like the, I don't want to...
I only ask because let's, at a certain point, let's just pull...
March 3rd is on a Tuesday.
Yeah.
So the week before that, it'd be Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday would be early voting, because you're required to do it during normal business hours.
Right, you know, Lydia, I personally, if we're all pretty certain it's not going to be ready, let's just assume it's not, and start as of January 1st, it's going to be, let's make the arrangements.
Well, you were talking about the ramp, and they just poured, so I'm like, ooh, did something, you know?
And it's winter, so who knows? So I, why don't we just, for all the things you have to do with the state, if you guys, I mean...
A pretty good setup out there, so...
Yeah, and there's plenty of the parking lot, and we'll just have town employees park elsewhere that they, you know, in front or whatever, so that the voters can... So I, I mean, it's up to you, it's your call, but I would...
I think that's probably where we're going.
I would just do it.
Then we don't have to worry about...
Making a change down the road. Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we need, someone's just going to need to coordinate that with, you know, Fire and Police and...
Yeah, well, I already started putting out the feelers.
I can't imagine it's an issue, but...
No, he's been very cooperative. It's outside of his, he'll already, I think, be gone unless there's a kind of extension, so...
But we've got to get the commitment ahead of time, so he'll still be here.
Right, and, yeah, hopefully he'll put in a good word for you with the new Fire Chief.
No, just, you know. All right. Was there anything else regarding, Ed, did you have anything you wanted to say about the renovations that weren't spoken about yet?
We have a schedule. The schedule states end of the month for the ramp, but again, weather-dependent, so...
What mark does it say that? Is it for February, the end of February?
No, the end of this month.
Oh, the end of December?
According to the schedule update that we received, but it's still...
The 17th, and it was poured yesterday, so...
Weather-dependent, so...
Why chance it? You know, Lydia, I think you're safe just going back, out back.
Because it's not only going to be the ramp, I mean, you're going to just keep moving ahead, so you don't know if the sprinkler contractors are going to be in this building as well.
Okay, all right.
You know what I mean?
Okay.
And no offense to the election, but, you know, if we can have it elsewhere and it keeps everybody out of here, to Phil's point, we don't know what stage they might be at doing something else, which maybe they need to be in this room, you know, who knows?
We need a little more DPW help moving, because we're going to have to move everything.
That's all right.
Well, and it also gives a lot more time to let residents know that it'll be in this different location.
Yeah. Put it in the tax bill, you need a vote? Put it in the tax bill, you need a vote?
And insert...
There's a lot of bills this week, so, perfect.
What else is going, just, well...
Yeah, perfect. What do you have to say? Great, we...
Yep, so I'll make, I'll make a motion that the town clerk insert in the next tax bill that's released, that the voting for the, due to construction, the voting will be in the emergency complex behind us. And they need a vote to actually insert something into the envelope, is that the deal?
For the primaries.
For the primaries. So I made the motion, is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Does that give you guys time to, okay.
Perfect.
All right. Okay. What else? Anything?
That's all I have.
No, the last thing on renovation is going to come fast, is they presented us on areas that are not going to be touched, that may require maintenance. So our discussion from previous of figuring out what we're going to do before people move back in upstairs and downstairs, that's going to be coming up quicker than we realized.
Okay. Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, I do have one thing I'd just like to put out there, and I actually should have brought it up at the department head meeting to let departments, department heads know. Colonial Power Group was here a week and a half, two weeks ago.
Yes, thank you.
And the letter from Dyn Energy, Dyn Energy, has been mailed out to all residents who are eligible. That means if you are on basic service, you are eligible to participate in the electric aggregate program.
Right.
And there has been some questions and uncertainty about whether this is a legitimate letter that they've received. It is. And if they have questions, they can contact my office or the number at Colonial Power as well.
Right. So what Marlene's referencing, I did receive it, actually. So this is about your Eversource electricity bill. Eversource will remain your, excuse me, will remain your electric company. This is about the supplier down below that provides Eversource, however the process is set up. So you're still an Eversource customer whether you opt in or not, but to Marlene's point, you are going to be transferred over to the new supplier unless you fill out the form that came in the mail and mail it back saying, "I want everything to stay as it is today," which is a higher rate than the town negotiated on the residents and businesses' behalf. I've seen some things on social media, and I understand the confusion, but I, hopefully we just clarified it a little bit. Eversource remains as your electric, your local electric company. It's all about who the energy they're getting, who supplies the energy to them, and the town negotiated for a lesser rate than Eversource was offering, and that's what people are going to get unless they fill out the paperwork and mail it back to that company.
Right. There was an announcement in the newspaper.
Yes, there was, I saw it yesterday.
There's information posted on the town's website and Facebook.
There was, I saw that as well. Facebook, and we've also discussed it at a couple meetings, which I think we're telling you. Sometimes people don't listen or understand until it comes in the mail, and I get it. And it also...
Thursday, Thursday, 1 to 4, right? They're supposed to...
Yes, they're going to, they're here...